Here.
Stephanie.
Here.
John.
Here.
Nate.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Fudge of allegiance.
Fudge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Do I have a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings. Public hearing number four, approval of use of funds to allow reports for history center and library.
You guys each had a report in there regarding the history center and the library. What we've been finding is in order to get grants to repair these buildings through the national register, you have to go through a process. One of those processes is to have a plan of action. It has to be done by an engineer or I guess, I don't know what the, not archaeologist.
Architect.
Architect or whatever, yeah.
Structural.
Structural engineer. Unfortunately, there are grants available for this that we could possibly apply for, but it could be a year, a year and a half before we could apply for those grants, which would delay those projects. I do have funds available in the general fund that I put aside for the history center in case we decided to do any repairs this year to it. We could use those funds to pay for these plans, to have them enacted. The history preservation is asking that we consider at least doing the history center now and possibly doing the history center and the library, but the cost is $3,500 per plan. But like I said, with this plan in effect, it would open us up to be able to apply for grants to do the repairs on the building. So in other words, it's gonna, we're gonna have to spend money to be able to make.
To get money.
We do.
And like I, like I've always said, when you delay something, nothing ever gets cheaper.
Yeah.
No, never does.
I make a motion to approve for both the history center and the library.
You got a motion. Do I have a second?
All second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Turned public hearing for copy or lease.
Motion enter public hearing.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody got anything to say?
We've already approved the bid, so.
Make a motion to go out of the hearing.
Motion to go out. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 12, 2020, authorizing mayor to sign lease agreement for copy or lease with access systems.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Travis.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Resolution 13, 2020, approving proclamation of emergency. Everybody's got this, got it in their council pack. I'm not gonna read the whole thing. I'm just gonna read basically a couple, three lines. Now therefore, I Doug O'Connor, the duly elected mayor of the city of Lisbon of Iowa, do hereby proclaim until further notice the following. State of emergency or public danger exists within the city of Lisbon because of the threat of the spread of the COVID-19 virus. And there's other stuff. That's basically it. And what it basically just says, everything that the school's done with Lynn County Public Health's done, school board's done, governor, governor Reynolds done and everything. I don't have to do anything without doing it.
We need to approve the resolution.
Does this make it, is there any changes like that the residents need to be aware of? There's like a curfew's in play because of this or?
It isn't stated in this, but I will, I'm gonna do a curfew here at the end.
This is just pretty much declaring that there is an emergency so we can take action if needed.
I need a motion. Prove that.
I motion to approve.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Steph. Nate.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Resolution 14, 2020, approving payment of essential warrants having a cut-off date or an interest assessment that became, become due before next council meeting can be held.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
These being paid.
Motion is second. Travis.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Resolution 15, 2020, approving suspension of utility bills shut off from March and April.
I did make a mistake when I initially sent this out to you. I put April and May, but it should be March and April. So we did not want to do any shut offs for the end of this month or the end of April, giving people time to catch up.
Are we gonna waive the late fees?
No. I hadn't planned on that. I talked to several other cities that, that have talked about it and it pretty much is honestly the same people over and over and over again. So you're pretty much just rewarding the people who never pay it on time anyway.
I understand that and I agree, but in this situation, there might be other people who wouldn't normally be and I'm not, I don't wanna risk penalizing them because we're worried about rewarding somebody else is my whole thing. And I, I would be in favor of waiving the late fees for those two months as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not in favor of that really. I don't see. You're rewarding them and it's just a late fee penalty. And they're gonna get the same thing probably from a line together.
They won't because a lot of those places are.
A lot of those places are already waiving.
Places are waiving late fees. I mean, it's, we're not talking about doing it for the rest of the year or anything. You're talking about two months and I really do believe, maybe not March, but I do believe in April, there could be people who are in, who are struggling.
Yeah, most everybody's paid for March already.
Yeah. I, I don't think March really has an effect, but I think it could have an effect on some people. And I know it's only $15, but only $15 to me might be food for somebody's kid for the week, you know?
I mean, these kids, these kids are now eating at home, the school kid, I mean, my business is closed, so I'm out of a job right now, you know, so.
Schools closed.
Schools closed. They are still paying us.
Yeah.
But it's just, there's some people that are very unfortunate. I mean, I'm maybe one of the lucky ones, but there's a lot more people that are less fortunate. I, I'm all in favor of waiving the late fee, at least for April.
You could, you could make a motion to approve it based on waiving the late fees for April and then we could look at it again after that.
I, I would make a motion to approve the suspension of the shut offs for March and April and waive any late fees for April.
Okay, got it.
You have a second.
I second it.
Sarah.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
I really screwed that one up, didn't I?
And he's so proud. He giggles.
Resolution 16, 2020, approving how council meetings will be held during the emergency.
I talked to Mark and since we don't have any electronic technology that we're gonna have to, one of the first things we look into after this whole thing is over. He suggested that what happens if we need to hold another meeting, our first meeting in April or whatever, have Doug and I present in the council chambers and all you guys could conference call in. He said that would be legal to do in this situation. So we'll, we could take it by one day at a time if we need to have a meeting on the 15th, I think 15th or 13th of April. We could do it that way. If not, we'll just suspend that meeting and have one at the end of April, so.
Can we Zoom? Did he say we could Zoom?
Um, yeah, we can do it any type electronically. I just don't have the, I just don't know how to do it, so.
Zoom is the easiest thing you'll ever.
It's the easiest thing.
Video conference. And literally you would set up a Zoom meeting and you would send the invite on to all of us.
Email it all.
We would all be right there on video together. It'd literally be like being in this room together, but we're all in separate areas on video.
And we can use our phone.
Yep, you can use your phone.
So you don't have to have a special computer or anything.
Desktop, desktop, whatever you wanna use.
Yeah, we could do it either way, as long as.
We do them twice a day.
As long as we post it and we still have to have it open to the public.
And that link could be posted on the agenda and, you know, if you do the meeting ID and stuff like that, anybody could join.
Okay. So I can change the resolution to include the way we talked about as far as conference call and to include Zoom?
I mean, I don't care how we do it. I'm just saying that would be another option if it's the long term. If you're only talking one meeting or something like that, or maybe we don't even have a meeting on the 13th. I know that goes a little bit around too, but there's not really much happening. So if you're just talking one meeting or something like that, it's probably not that big of a deal, but if it becomes longer.
Yeah, they were talking, it could be another two to three weeks there. They didn't wanna say any dates, but they are talking about possibly two to three more weeks.
Well, I just, I'm, that's fine. I don't wanna, I don't want to, um, right now cancel our next council meeting just for the simple fact that we don't know what's gonna happen in the next two weeks. So I mean, we're a city. So I mean, if we have to make some decisions for that, so I'm not gonna cancel the meeting. But I agree with Stephanie, so. Do I have a motion for that?
I motion.
Second.
Second.
Nate.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
All right, resolution 17, 2020, approving extension of vacation use. I, um, when this all started going down, I had approved probably good three weeks, probably, of vacation for Rick.
Four weeks.
Four weeks. Anyway, I called Rick back to work. I can't do that. It has to be, the council has to be calling him back. But we, but he's back to work anyway. So what we're gonna do is Connie said, I mean, how long, how long, how much vacation can they carry over?
Right now, they can only carry one week over for 30 days. But my suggestion would be to allow everyone to be able to carry over the vacation they have left for 90 days after their anniversary date. That would give people who had to cancel their vacations time to rebook them and do that.
So you're talking about just for this year, right?
This year, yes, just this year.
And I did tell Rick, as soon as this is done and over with or in a slowdown, he's taking those four weeks off. But no, I mean, he don't get, and they're off, he's off then, so.
But it would only be fair since one, to allow everybody else to do it two. So I think, I just, I just came up with 90 days. I thought, you know, a lot of people have canceled trips. They, they might not still wanna travel in June or July. So if you give them 90 days after their anniversary date this year, then they should have time to continue to take those days that they, they need to take. And everybody's gonna need a vacation after this anyway.
Just as long as we don't have everybody trying to do it at the same time.
Yeah.
Cause I do plan on being on the first flight out that I'm on.
She's supposed to have airports open. She's out.
For some reason, we all knew that.
And she's on the second flight out too. Once she gets back, she's gone again.
Okay, so do I have a motion for that?
I'll move to approve.
Yeah, a motion to have a second.
I just have a quick question. So what sort of things is he doing that require him to come back?
Well, at the time, Amy was gone. I wouldn't allow her to come back. And we didn't really know what was gonna happen. We had no clue what was gonna happen. So Amy's mostly back Wednesday, I think it is.
She could, she could come back today, I thought.
Well, I think, well, I think she's scheduled for Wednesday, so when she comes back.
She's on the schedule for Wednesday, but she, she's released to come back today.
And I'll talk about that later too. But, um, so that's why I brought Rick back, cause for one, we only had one officer. So that's why I brought Rick back.
Jeff was scheduled to take a vacation too, but his, his trip got canceled, so.
So I mean, there could have been a possibility we didn't have anybody on duty, so. He called me and said that he'd be willing to, so I said, yeah, that's fine. And then I later found out I can't do that, but.
I was just wondering, cause it's so dead out there. I was thinking, God, we can't possibly.
Well, I know that he came, we were putting cameras up out there and he stopped because he wanted to know if we had recognized somebody. Apparently there has been some break-ins downtown and other places. People are, it, it, when crisis happens, they go into crisis mode or whatever. So I don't know. There's been a few things that he said that they were out looking for a wallet or something, so.
So do I have a motion for that?
Already, already did. Just need to vote.
Okay, Travis.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Um, it says, gentlemen, we're going to, any public comments or not public, anything from city administrator?
No.
Mayor?
I had a meeting with Rick today. We will have three officers on duty. I do, I told him I do not want them overlapping, you know, three or four hours. I mean, I can understand an hour here and there. He did tell me that there has been break-ins going on and I want them out. I, I know what time their last, when they leave, but I ain't gonna say that in public. But they're, pretty much they're gonna be on duty every day. As for right now, we have two employees that are out for 14 days. One went to Florida, one went to Colorado. Connie instructed them both to stay home for 14 days. One of them's already got three days already in it, so that. When. I would look, the governor's gonna sooner or later shut the town, shut it, to stay down. Sooner or later, sooner or after. We need to, our essential employees that we need besides the firemen, policemen, stuff like that, is our city workers. I can't have all four of them on at the same time, cause if one of them gets sick, they take them all out. So what I'm going, what I propose is two of them work for five days and then, then there'll be somebody on call for the weekends or whatever, and then two of them work the next five days. And, um, what do we call it, the COVID-19 pay that we're gonna probably, well, we'll pay them for their time off. But we, but they'll be under the, understanding that if, I'm just gonna use Chris and Nate working together. Chris Coleman and Nate working together and then Travis and Chris Ryan working together. If one, if two of them working and they have a water main break, those other two can be called in. They gotta be, we're gonna make it perfectly clear that even though they're sitting at home, if we call them, they gotta come in. And that's, um, so that's why I just can't, we as a city can't afford to have all four of them working at the same time. If one of them gets sick, we're screwed, cause I'm not going down to the sewer pipe and work. I'll tell you that.
Travis called me right before I came and he said that Matt Harden is doing this.
Yeah, me too. They're doing one week on, one week off, half the staff to, and maintaining social distancing. And he's concerned that his 14 days off will be, well, we will, he would have to come back before that if we're gonna do something like a five-day plan or a week plan.
Well, he's talking about day 12. He would be coming back on day 12.
Yeah. If he takes this week off, that'll be day 12 the following month.
And they would work until four o'clock next Monday. And then Tuesday morning, Travis and the other Chris would come in. And then Nate would work for seven days. And he wanted to do it for a month, but you're saying maybe just start with a couple weeks?
I, I think we should take a couple weeks at a time.
I do too.
I don't think we should plan two or three months out.
No.
It's changing on a daily basis, so I think, I think we should.
Do you think that we should, I mean, I guess we don't have to do a motion for this or anything, do we, or do we?
No, we declared an emergency.
I was gonna say, because, I mean, at this point, fine, it's for, it's for a month and then if we have our meeting on the 13th and we decide that we don't need it again, then we're just done?
And I, like I told Connie, it's like, I don't, you know, I don't know if they're gonna spend eight hours on the sewer plant or what, I don't, but I mean, even if we have to, we can put them in the streets.
Today, they were spreading rock on alleys, so they were separated. One was in a dump truck and one was in the back.
That I think we probably should think about is, we don't know how long this is gonna go on and with only half of a crew on, some of our stuff is gonna fall behind. We're gonna get behind on stuff and I don't remember what we decided about summer help and all that kind of stuff, but we might have to look at something.
Yeah, I think that's too early right now.
The only, the only bad thing about summer help is, I mean, right now it's too early for one thing, but you don't have any idea who they're with, you know?
Yeah.
Whether, you know?
I just think we need to be prepared for the fact that we're gonna probably be behind on some things.
I, I mean, luckily we're, right now we're in slow time. I mean, that's.
And I really wish.
I mean, hopefully we don't get hit with a major blizzard.
To these people that the last time everybody was flushing their wipes down the toilet, it cost us $30,000.
We did send a Facebook post as well as almost every other town around here did the same. So everybody's in the same boat, but.
And I hope that they attention.
Say another story should be in the sun about it this week as well.
Good, thank you.
Will you put that number in there?
I believe. The $30,000 number? I believe we could have that.
Because, you know, if they, they realize that we're spending $30,000 of their dollars, they might think twice when they flush that.
Absolutely.
I did talk to Chris Saturday, Chris Coleman Saturday at, he must have weekend chores. He said it was just packed out there.
And Dell lost too, which I never thought of.
I suppose it wraps around.
Flushing ass, I gotta, it'd be great. I need time to sit.
And as of, or not, tomorrow, starting at 10 o'clock, Lisbon will be under a curfew.
And so what is that?
No, it's just essential. And I mean, you can go get gas or whatever, but I mean, you can't be walking the streets or.
For all ages?
Nobody, you're under a curfew.
What time is that?
Starting, starting 10 o'clock tomorrow night.
10 o'clock.
So curfew's 10 o'clock every night?
Yep.
Even the weekends?
And what time is the morning?
Six, five, five, I don't know. I don't, I guess I get home at 6:30. I go, I don't see many people. I'll say, let's say six.
Lloyd's works at.
But they're, they're.
But that's essential. They're going to work. It's just roaming around and.
Roaming around, walking.
So 10 to 5, you said?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And how are we getting that out?
Well.
Maybe put it on Facebook and.
We'll put that, I mean, I'll have, I can either, Connie or Rick can put it out. Call Lynn County and have them put on the news. I mean, it's just, and what it isn't, the only way that's, we're gonna stop this thing is if we just stay away from people. That's the only way it's gonna get stopped. You know, and I, I, you know, I don't work during the day, so I see a lot, I mean, there's just people walking around, right beside each other, kids playing right beside each other, you know? I mean, they close all this stuff down for a reason and no one is, it's not a big deal to them, basically.
I know. I see all these overnight by some of the high schoolers and I'm like, guys have been together for the last, like, there, there's no, like, overnights, there's no sleepovers when you're.
Yeah, that's not what this is about.
This is not what this is about.
Playground in our neighborhood was full this weekend.
I've seen so many people out and about during the day since I've been sitting at home. Just walking out.
More people walking dogs, I've seen, yeah.
And they say you can take walks. I mean, you can take walks.
Right by two of you around.
But it's together.
Stay apart.
You're not, you're not supposed to be in one big group walking. You can take a walk with a couple of your, like, my kids and myself, we're gonna take a walk.
Yeah, you're already a unit, but don't combine units.
We live together, but.
I'm gonna just sit out on my back deck and just not go out at all.
And when, and when you do go out, would you stop at the convenience stores or the grocery stores? Thank those people. I mean, they're dealing with a lot of people. Those are the ones that are gonna.
They're on the front lines, that's right.
Yeah.
That's all I got, is it?
I think so. The only other comment I had is, um, it's really, really slow here. Christina's out for 14 days. I'm on my own. I really don't feel like I need to sit here eight, nine hours a day. I will be in and out probably, but hopefully I, I, you don't expect me to sit here the whole day if something's going on.
If the citizens have to talk to Connie about, like, somebody had to have some papers signed by, or notarized by Connie today. Just get ahold of her and she will meet you down here to do it.
By appointment.
By appointment.
Right.
Yep.
I mean, cause what, like, you know, I mean, she'll, she'll be here probably every day when.
But not eight hours.
Yeah, it might be five, three hours one day and.
I do have, I get everything set up remotely where I've got, I'm getting all my, all the emails at home, our computer set up so I can work from home. The only thing I'm still working on is the phone lines. I thought I had it where they will forward to my cellphone. So I'm still working on that. It seems like one will forward and then the next one won't for some reason. So I'm not sure. I would need to get ahold of Windstream. So I'm gonna come in tomorrow, do the minutes, all the bills and all that and work on that again. But like I said, I'm just gonna play it by ear depending on, today was pretty quiet. Some of the questions were kinda stupid, but I guess.
And everything park and rec is canceled until?
Everything park and rec is canceled until we start doing signup for T-ball, baseball and softball. We'll see how that goes one day at a time. We have recommended that people stay away from the city parks, stay off the playground equipment. Fluids can be exchanged on that equipment, so everything else is, is shut down. Library's shut down. Southeastland is still doing deliveries or pickup appointment only.
I think that changed.
Deliveries only.
Yeah.
Is history center shut down?
Yes, history center is shut down also.
No clothing donations. They'll take food donations by appointment. And if you need food, whether you've been a food recipient in the past, just call them up.
Yeah, that's what the written said.
Then you just see whether you are at the right income level to get free food, they'll just give free food.
The fire department did go around to everybody at Myers Meadows this weekend, checked on them. We did a flyer with all the emergency numbers. My home number's on there, Travis's number's on there. So everybody at Myers Meadows has contact information if they need something, they know where to call.
Did Brandon ever get ahold of them, you know?
Yeah. Well, she called me and talked to me.
Oh, okay. She, she, I didn't know. She said she was gonna, because nobody called her back.
Yeah.
I talked to Brandon. It's up to the director to decide what's released. We've got plenty of food, but if you want toilet paper, you better be on your last roll fast. They don't have much. And they, they signed up another 10 people just last week for food. So we must be up to 70 pounds now, something like that. It's just kept going up. It started in the, in the summer when we have pop-up food pantries. And we had over 10 people signed up just because of that. So we're reaching more people now.
Um, and, yeah, Brandon is the head of our EMA, so he's updating me on a lot of stuff. I mean, I get an update, I get an, I get an email from Public Health every day. But, um, he's, he's gonna be making a lot of the calls on what we're gonna do and what we're not gonna do.
We're relying on him for information and for advice.
And I mean, and he's, he's sitting in the hot zone right now. But, um, I, I did see and I related to Brandon and Rick, he both, there was some town that had like a retirement community like Myers Meadow where they had got ahold of all the residents and they gave them a green sticker and a red sticker to put in their window. If everything's good, it's green. If they got a problem, they put a red one up. Cause a lot of these, a lot of them, when they went over there this weekend, wouldn't answer the door. They were scared. So I think Brandon said that he would look into that and try to get that. I mean, we just gotta try to help your neighbor out as much as possible without having contact with them. But I mean, it, this is a trying time and I mean, that's the only way we're gonna get through it, I mean.
I did see some people on Facebook that were over there delivering food to their own families, saw the fire department and gave a little shout out on Facebook and thanked them and said that, you know, there's some people over there who don't have family around all the time and, you know.
Yeah, a friend of mine on Facebook, she shouted out to the Lisbon, and she lives in Cedar Rapids, but her mom lives at Myers Meadows and she gave Lisbon Fire Department a huge shout out. So it was nice to see.
So I, I'll be working with Brandon about that, about getting those stickers out there. I just think that's, you know, I think that's easiest, you know, then cops can go over there and park and do a walkthrough and see if there's any problems with them. A lot of those, like I said, a lot of them won't ask for help.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean.
Is LCC still open?
No. DAHS won't shut them down.
They're considered essential.
Um, that was part of our meeting today. They did say that their capacity as far as kids, they're down about 50%. So they don't even have, I mean, they're down to half. The daycare over by brothers, they have three kids today, so. More people, places are closing or working from home then. Kinda reduces childcare needs.
And Doug, I'm just asking from my own personal question. Would it get to the point, I mean, I don't know how it works to, like, if, so if Doug decided that he didn't wanna have businesses in Lisbon open anymore, could he do that or does that have to come from the governor?
He can do that. The governor announced.
He can make a recommendation.
The governor said that it is their, the own city and the counties, they can do those kind of things on their own. Like Johnson County, they declared shelter in place. Like Johnson County, they declared shelter in place.
And they did ask other businesses to be shut down.
Mm-hmm.
Swimming pools, hairstylists.
Yeah, Thomas Lamons and all that, the governor did that.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just wondering, like, if we had businesses here in town that we thought...
Were non-essential?
Yeah.
Like, do you think that?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not making that call. I ain't gonna, I ain't gonna close some business down. I mean, you know, like...
Hopefully they're smart enough.
Floyd's is an example. I mean, I can't close that down. I mean, I mean, they're bankrupt. You know, I mean, that's their business, you know, and, I mean, I still don't understand the bars and restaurants being able to serve food.
I don't.
And to give it out. I mean, that's just a call they made, but... Anybody got anything else? Everybody stay safe, wash your hands.
You too.
You too, bud.
Everybody have my...
Thirty seconds.
My cellphone number?
Yeah, you can put something up like on the door or something like you, if you want.
Yeah.
It's still there. If I'm out here, I'll put something on the door.